Welcome to all. I’m Dr. Jonathan Simon. I have the pleasure, not only to welcoming you here this evening to this extraordinary event, but to open it by really expressing a note of appreciation. And the note of appreciation in our theme of accountability to humanity is to actually start with a note of appreciation for all of you for turning out tonight as the first step in holding ourselves accountable to humanity around the events of Darfur. But tonight would not have happened had it not been for an extraordinary group of student activists. And I also wanted to, at the beginning, thank an extraordinary group of students from both the undergraduate campus and the professional school medical campus who have worked together to make this event happen. And in a university amidst transition and transformation, as Boston University is right now, in a theme that says, “Let’s act as one university and bring together the activities of the Charles River Campus and the Medical Campus in the South End,” this event, in that spirit, I think best reflects some of the goals and some of the transformation of the university at this time. So with thanks to the students for their activism and for the leadership and for bringing this event to fruition tonight. The first step in accountability is knowledge. And tonight is a night and an opportunity to deepen our understanding and to deepen our knowledge about the events in Darfur. And it’s really through this act of the accumulation and the deepening of wisdom and knowledge that we begin to hold ourselves accountable for our world and for the actions that occur amidst us in our world. So your physical act of presence is a step on the road to heightened accountability and a step on the road, hopefully, to really attaining the goal, which is to improve the status of populations on the planet. But I think we also are quite fortunate that we sit in an amphitheater in an institution which is also trying to hold itself accountable. And I am quite pleased to be part of an institution that last May, through its trustees, expressed by the leadership of the new president of the university, Robert Brown, made a decision to divest the university’s financial portfolio and holdings from companies involved in Sudan. Often it is the activists as individuals who are trying to hold their institutions accountable. And I’m very pleased to be here where I can read a comment from President Brown, where he stated at the time of divestiture, “For a university to contemplate a divestment action is a very, very serious thing for us to do. And it’s something that we should not do except in the most extreme of circumstance.” But if you look at what’s going on in Darfur and in Sudan and what the whole world must surely understand as a genocide, this is one of those special circumstances where a university should take a position. And I am pleased to be part of a university that in fact has taken a position. The program tonight will be organized as follows. Dr. Alex DeValle will provide us through a keynote address on a brief historical overview of the conflict in the Darfur region and provide us an update on the current situation. Following Alex’s remarks, Susannah Serkin will nominate a panel consisting of Dr. Jennifer Leaning, Mr. Omar Ismail, and Reverend Dr. Gloria White-Hammond. Ms. Serkin will introduce the moderators at the time that she opens that session, but let me just take a moment to inform you or to educate you that Ms. Serkin is the Deputy Director of Physicians for Human Rights and has really spent the last period of her life as an advocate and an investigator of some of the worst of the atrocities that happen on our planet. And I look forward to her bringing to bear and facilitating through her moderation of the panel some of her insights, as she has been one of the documentarists who’s brought to the global stage a knowledge and awareness of the events of Darfur. But my real role here now is to introduce Dr. Alex DeValle. And I was trying to think, how do you describe Alex? Okay? Now, Alex is clearly an activist with deep personal and political commitments to some of the issues. Alex, as many of you know, is a very prolific writer, has published a number of books on the region. I encourage you, if you really want to get an in-depth understanding, is to take a look at the book that he and his colleague Julia Flint wrote on Darfur, A Short History of a Long War, which is not a very cryptic title. It will take you through how deep-seated and long this conflict has been. Alex is an educator, Alex is a scholar, but I decided that the real description of Alex is as a practitioner. And for those of you that know Alex, you’ll say, Alex is about the last guy in the world that would be called a practitioner, okay? But Alex is a practitioner of peace. And I think that’s one of the things that, for me, as a colleague and as a friend, I see as a real goal, a mission, something to strive for. And all of us, in our own way, can be peace builders. But Alex will usually be introduced as being a fellow of the Global Equity Initiative at Harvard University, where he holds his faculty appointment, as Director of Justice Africa, an organization that documents events occurring on the African continent, and truly seen as one of the global experts on Darfur, and therefore asked, as we have asked him tonight, to address this public meeting. Alex received a Doctor of Philosophy and Social Anthropology from the University of Oxford in a study of the 1984 famine in Darfur. So here you have a person who has really spent the last 20 years of his scholarly life trying to understand the roots of the conflict in Darfur. In that 20 years, I think his contributions have been certainly to educate us about the complexities of the conflict of the region, the deep-seated historical roots of the conflict, and to remind us of the importance of taking what he calls an ethno-political lens to understand the conflict. And he wrote of the importance of understanding, quote, “The ethnic mosaic, rather than the polarized Arab-African identity divide,” which is so often used in the popular media to describe the conflict in the region. His scholarship has led to practical engagement. He is a practitioner of peace building, and I highlight his recent service as one of the few people who was asked to staff the African Union peace negotiations that were held in Abuja and unfortunately failed to bring the conflict to a full resolution. In a town that claims to have many experts, Alex is truly an expert on this region and on this conflict. But he also finds time to serve both as a husband and as a father to three children, to remind us all that amidst our challenges in our activism and our scholarship, we also have the obligation to serve our families and the humanity of life. And he’s got really wonderful kids, by the way. It’s a true pleasure to introduce Alex and to welcome him to provide the keynote address.[560.16][560.16](Applause)
Thank you, John. Thank you, and this is an extraordinary and impressive turnout. As John said, I first went to Darfur as a graduate student just over 20 years ago. And like any good social anthropologist, I chose a place that was remote and that nobody had heard of. And for the next 15 years, I had to explain to everyone where Darfur was. No one quite knew the existence or the location of this place. Sadly, that is no longer the case. And not only did I choose a remote place, but my first host was in one of the most remote and barren and arid parts of Darfur. He was an old Arab sheikh, nearly blind in his 80s, who was living out the last of his years in an extraordinarily bare landscape, just a landscape of rocks and rubble with a few thorn trees and great volcanic granitic plugs ringing the horizon. And he pitched his tent, his big black tent, on the sand. And as his people were impoverished and rendered destitute by the drought, he was doing his best to maintain pretenses of extravagant hospitality, slaughtering a sheep for us, serving us sweet tea on his beautiful Persian carpets spread out on the sand. And this old sheikh reminisced about he and his tribe, which was an Arab tribe. He was black, like all the people of Darfur, black and Muslim and a devout Sufi. He reminisced how his nomadic Arab tribe would take their camels further south to the farmland of the sedentary four farmers and would exchange meat and milk for grain and would graze their camels on the harvested stubble of the crops. And this old sheikh, Sheikh Hilal Mohammed Abdullah is his name, was famous for his justice, and not only Arabs from his own tribe, but people from all the multiple tribes of Darfur, Arab and non-Arab, would come to his court because his justice was famous for its fairness, also famous for its swiftness. It would be delivered the same day in the best Bedouin tradition. Sheikh Hilal’s son is even more famous. His name is Moussa Hilal. He is the lead commander of the Janjaweed in Darfur today, the man who is number one on the United States list of suspected war criminals, of genocidal, and a person, a man who is very likely to be indicted by the International Criminal Court in the coming months for some of the most gross crimes against humanity. And even when I was in Darfur, which was really the last years in which there was a measure of peace, in which one could travel the region and spend the night in a village without having to ask which, what was the identity of the people, without having to ask, “Are you Arabs? Are you not Arabs?” These questions just had no meaning at that point. But even then, as I was living there, the seeds of this disaster were being sown. The local seeds were in that disaster, the great famine that I studied in 1984 and 1985, and the way that impoverished so many people across the region, and particularly impoverished the nomads, left so many nomads without the means of subsistence, without the means of livelihood, desperately trying to scrabble some sort of livelihood from the few bits of farmland that were left to them. But it was also in those years that the civil war in neighboring Chad spilled over, and militia from Chad ventured into Darfur with their own, with their arms, with their ruthlessness. And they began to make alliances with the local groups, particularly the local Arabs, and instigated the first war that so disfigured Darfur in the late 1980s. And the other thing that was going on at that very moment was the war in southern Sudan that was being ratcheted up at that moment, a war that in the end lasted for 20 years, that saw many of the same gross abuses that we have seen in Darfur, mass killings, plunder, pillage, even enslavement of people in that conflict. And the critical decision was taken, actually, while I was in Sudan, a decision by the head of military intelligence that the main instrument that they would use in fighting that war in the south would not be the regular army. It would be a militia, or a series of militia. And they traveled, and he and some colleagues traveled across the borderlands between north and south Sudan, setting up a whole string of militias that would ravage the southern Sudanese over the subsequent years. And it was that strategy, the strategy of stoking local conflict, of arming local tribesmen, of giving them utter impunity, of declaring any area in which there was a conflict, an ethics-free zone in which anything went, in which one simply needed to give the order, “Go out, do what is necessary, don’t report back.” And it was that particular tradition of utter impunity, of utter contempt for human rights and the rule of law, that over the years ratcheted up the conflict, not only in southern Sudan, to the appalling levels that we saw, but planted the seeds of the explosion of violence in Darfur. Over those years, between the late 1980s and when the conflict erupted into national and international consciousness in 2003, there were multiple militias in Darfur, creating local wars, acting with impunity, acting with the blessing of these men chiefly from military intelligence. There were, I think, two really fundamental structural causes of this conflict that we must attend to. One was the complete impunity of those in charge of these military strategies. They were never called to account. None of them has ever been charged in a court of law. None of them has ever been disciplined. Some of them have left the service. It is simply because they have served their time in military intelligence and gone on to a comfortable retirement in the villas outside Khartoum. And I think it is this complete lack of accountability for crimes over decades that laid the foundations for what happened in Darfur. And if there is no accountability for what is happening now, I fear that this same cycle will be repeated. The second cause, of course, was lack of democracy, the fact that Sudan has aspired to democracy. All Sudanese will tell you they have had democratic aspirations, democratic interludes in the past, and the country actually, at various times in its past, has had an extraordinarily vibrant tradition of liberalism with a free press, with free and fair elections. But for the last 17 years, it has been ruled by a military dictatorship that came to power, overthrowing a flawed but nonetheless real democratic experiment in Sudan. Were there to be democracy, were there to be all the things that go with democracy, like a free press, like a functioning judicial system, like mechanisms for the relatively fair distribution of the nation’s wealth, this would not have occurred. There would not have been the impulse for Darfurians to take up arms in what was, I think, in many ways, a very tragic miscalculation. In fact, one of the leaders of the rebellion, Abdul Wahid Al-Nor, told me in Abuja, when he was actually refusing to sign the Darfur peace agreement, he said to me, “Had I known what would happen to my people, I would not have started this revolution,” which I think was a frank admission of his own miscalculation and one might almost say irresponsibility. Some of the rebel leaders have to also be called to account for their disastrous leadership, their own abuses of human rights. The situation in Darfur is disastrous. It is not getting better. To my mind, it doesn’t matter whether we call it genocide or not. Genocide is a very simple, big name for a very complex and very horrible situation. A rape is a rape whether it’s part of genocide or not. A famine is, in my book, a crime whether it is part of genocide or not. Those in the United Nations International Commission who refused to use the word genocide said, “Crimes as heinous as genocide have been committed in Darfur.” And in my book, that’s good enough. I don’t think we should get hung up on the question of, “Is this genocide? Is it not? This is a distraction. There are horrible crimes, horrible things going on now, today, that need to be brought to an end.” I think our number one aim now is stop the killing. The killing has to be stopped on all sides. It is primarily the government, it is primarily the government and the associated Janjaweed because they have greater capacity, they have a greater sense of impunity, but some of the rebels are pretty nasty, too. What’s needed, I believe, is a ceasefire. I happen to be a skeptic about military intervention. I think that the idea that the United States should send its own troops to impose a moral order in parts of the Muslim world is an idea that does not travel well just at this particular moment. I think that the record of interventions is not good. I think that a lot can be achieved without such an intervention, and I personally have been calling for a ceasefire, a properly monitored ceasefire, as the immediate step to stop the killing. And then, in that context, when you have a peace, then you can have peacekeepers. Then troops can actually fulfill some sort of function. But we mustn’t take our eye off the real, long-term issues that will not only bring this to a conclusive end, but prevent it from happening again. Accountability. The International Criminal Court is on the case. It is shocking that the United States is not only not a signatory to the statute of the International Criminal Court, but is not actually cooperating with the ICC. What will happen if, in a couple of months, the ICC issues an indictment against a senior Sudanese general for crimes against humanity? And most of the world lines up and says, “We insist that this man is extradited to face trial in The Hague, and we will not cooperate with the government of Sudan until this happens.” The United States’ position on the ICC is one of non-cooperation. I think it would be shameful if, across the international community, it is the United States that is the one breaking ranks on that. And the other thing that is absolutely essential is democracy for Sudan. The North-South War came to an end almost two years ago, and it came to an end with what was called, rather misleadingly, the Comprehensive Peace Agreement. It wasn’t comprehensive, it didn’t include Darfur, but it had some remarkably strong elements in it. And the strongest is free elections in 2009. And if the Sudanese are able to vote freely in 2009, surely they will not vote into power those who have perpetrated such horrors on their own country. It is those elections, I believe, that more than anything else hold the key to a fair and just future for Sudan. So this, I believe, is the other thing that we must really focus our efforts upon. And I’m tremendously encouraged that across this country, across the world, there is such an outpouring of horror at what is going on and an energy and commitment to putting it right. And I think this meeting is an extraordinary example of that, and I really commend the organizers of this and to all of you.
Hi, everybody. Alex, you’re not off the hook yet, so stay here with us. And I’m Susannah Serkin. I’m going to call up our very distinguished panel. I just want to say one thing about the electricity situation we have here, that this should bring all of us in this room a bit closer to Darfur. I was in Darfur in July doing a training workshop, and the generators that were cranking up the electricity routinely sort of started flickering and went off. And then all the microphones would stop and our simultaneous interpreting machines went, and we somehow got through anyway, as we will tonight, so just feel that this is bringing us a little closer to one element of what it’s like over there. Alex, why don’t you come and sit with us on one of the red couches? And now I will call up our wonderful panel. I want to congratulate the students who’ve organized this and also congratulate them from going local with our speakers, because our speakers have been all over the world and they’re very distinguished, but they all are currently resident in Boston. And it’s amazing the leadership that we have in this town on Darfur, people who are making a difference locally, nationally, and globally. And you don’t need to bring people on airplanes to Boston to have a really powerful evening on Darfur. So first, Jennifer Leaning, who’s a physician. She’s professor of the Practice of International Health at the Harvard School of Public Health and co-director of the Harvard Humanitarian Initiative. And Jennifer herself was, with my organization Physicians for Human Rights, in Darfur conducting an investigation on the Chad-Sudan border in 2004. Next, thank you, Jennifer. We are very fortunate to have with us in Cambridge this year Omar Ismail, who is a fellow in a human rights policy at the Carr Center. Omar has recently come from, I guess I should be moving over here shortly, but I’ll stay here for a second. Omar has recently come back from the region. He’s the co-founder and director of the Darfur Peace and Development Group and has also been a founder of the Sudan Democratic Forum, which is a think-tank in Washington. He really has extraordinary insights about not only his fellow Darfurians, but also the environment right now and even what’s going on today. Thank you, Omar, for being with us. Reverend Dr. Gloria White-Hammond, a wonderful pastor and physician. You want me to take this when I go there? Okay, I’ll do that. Gloria is the co-pastor of the Beth El AME Church in Boston. She’s a pediatrician at the South End Community Health Center. She is a graduate of Boston University, Go BU, and Tufts Medical School, and Harvard Divinity School. So she really covers a lot of the bases, but, you know, we’re going to send her to Simmons soon. Gloria is really a national leader on Darfur. She recently served as the National Chairperson for the Million Voices on Darfur. Remember when many important people spoke, including George Clooney and others, on the Mall in Washington? Gloria was the leader of that. She’s also in the Boston-Massachusetts Save Darfur Coalition, and is the founder of a wonderful group, which she may tell us a little bit about, My Sister’s Keeper, that works in southern Sudan, helping girls get educated and achieve their rights. And so, this is our panel. So now I’m going to move over here. And what we’re going to do really right now is engage with this panel and follow-up on Alex’s talk and learn from this really extraordinary group. They may disagree with each other on a couple of points, and we’ll get into that, too. And then we’re going to turn it over to all of us to be educated by you and for you to ask your questions. And I’m sure there’s other expertise that we’re not even aware of. I know I have colleagues from PHR here, and I see other people who are also distinguished leaders, educators, intellectuals, and activists. So we really are going to have a true town meeting. I want to just say, before I start with some of the questions and follow-up queries that we’re going to make today, that it’s quite a sobering day today in Darfur. Just today, there have been a new round of attacks in the northern town of El Fasher. I was actually, I landed in El Fasher just a few months ago on an airplane and saw it from the air. I didn’t get out. In El Fasher, it was already very tense then, and we were advised that it wouldn’t be too safe for people like us to travel there. What we’re going to do before we get into a deeper conversation is have Jennifer and then Gloria each speak for a couple of minutes about what’s on your mind right now and where you’ve been, what you’ve done. And in particular, maybe Jennifer, you might also just give us a little bit of a deeper sense from the study that you did of, you know, what really has happened, who’s where, who’s been displaced, what the attacks have been like over the last few years, maybe just to give everybody a sense of, Alex talked about the horrible things, but maybe you could detail that a little bit.
Well, thank you, Susannah, and it is a privilege to be here. And it’s great to see this group of people with, I bet, a fair amount of background knowledge about Darfur in the room. And a number of you probably will be very good questioners when we stop talking and you take the mics, so I’m looking forward to that opportunity. In the brief space that In the brief space that I'm holding onto this mic, which is about to degenerate into a noise—I can feel it, so I'm holding it somewhat tentatively. Alex did an excellent job of conveying a certain landscape in Darfur. He could talk about many other landscapes as well, because he traveled in many parts. I was on the Chad-Darfur border in the early summer of 2004, with the first of three investigations that Physicians for Human Rights launched to assess what was happening to the people on Darfur's side of the border by talking to the refugees that Omar has referenced, that is, the people who had fled across. And this is as of May and June of 2004. So the war had been going on for a little over a year, the really frank, open war, this latest phase of what, as Alex has referred to, is a long war. But this very explosive, very visible, quite widespread war had been going on for a little over a year, and yet, the international community had not been paying very much attention to it until the early spring of 2004. There'd been monitors, there'd been some humanitarian work, but it was a long time coming, in terms of international focus. So that when we were there in May, June of 2004, on the Chad-Darfur border—which is a very long border, it's well over 800 miles, and it traverses much of north Darfur and much of west Darfur, and goes far down into the Central African Republic border—you need to look at a map of Sudan to see what a vast country it is, and how huge that line, that border area, is to understand, first of all, the difficulty in assessing what is actually going on inside Darfur, but also on the border areas. And secondly, to see how a war there that is not contained, that has all of the energy and agents in it that Alex referred to or hinted at, in terms of Chad's participation, and one could go north, one could go south, and one could go west, in terms of the implications for this war if it is not contained. You have to look at a map to see how pivotal this conflict in Darfur is to the future of a large swath of Africa, the Horn of Africa, and the entire Sahel. So our plan was to fly into Njamina, which is the capital of Chad. If you take—if you look at a map of Africa, Njamina is smack dab in the middle of that big bulge of Africa. It's smack dab in the middle, but it's a long way to the Chad-Darfur border. And so we traveled from Njamina to the border. And then what we found is that there are large sections of this border as of 2004, and it's still the case, that were considered too unstable, too uncharted, too still possibly filled with mines and explosive remnants of war from earlier conflicts. And that was one part of the border. And another part of the border had thousands of refugees that were coming in from Darfur, and nobody had yet countered them, nobody knew where they were. They were self-settling right on that border with relatively generous but very poor families that lived in Chad. And then there were sections where there were refugee camps just starting to be built. So a year into this conflict, over a year, the international community was very, very slow in responding to what was then billed as 180,000 to 200,000 refugees. We traveled as much as we could up and down that border, from the south to the north, and found that ecosystem changed. It was just at the start of the rainy season. In the south, it was warm, and the rains were coming. It was still very, very dry. And if you looked at the land for a moment, it looked as if it were unpopulated. And then you paused, and there were always people on the horizon or people who'd come there. And if you got out of any vehicle you were in and you started to walk, you realized that what was sand was also filled with dry dust bunnies that were remnant dung from animals. And it was—it very clearly became a country that was already—this is the Chad-Darfur border area in the south—that was already overgrazed and overpopulated. As poor as it looked and as barren as it looked, as you move north, all the maps that show any sign of green, as you pass the town of Abetchay in Chad, which has just recently been overrun by a range of militia, if you go north of Abetchay and you look at any map that still has that area as green—it is a ridiculous map, it is out of date, it is not paying attention to what the Sahara is doing and what drought is doing—it is desert. You feel as if you're in, basically, the start of the Saharan Desert, and you're heading into Libya. It feels as if you're heading into Libya, what one might imagine the Libyan desert to be. And so, much of this—the refugees and much of this area—is extraordinarily dry, and basically, sand and rock and wind. And it is in these conditions, very bleak conditions, that the refugees first landed. And in the last year and a half, two years, the international community has set up moderately okay refugee camps, but they have to keep moving them inland, because—it's not because they run out of space for taking care of the refugees, although the numbers are increasing, it's that they run out of water, drilling very deep bar holes. They still can only sustain 15,000 to 20,000 people in a refugee camp, and then they have to move them and find others and other sources of water. It is an extraordinarily poor and remote part of the world, as Alex was saying, and it is a place that cannot support this kind of density of refugee settlement. What we found in talking to the people is that they had experienced a massive wipeout of their towns, their villages, their property, their animals, their possessions, their heritage, the few that had rugs, the many that had gold, the many that had animals, the many that had farms, all of their stored and dried foodstuffs, all of their containers for carrying anything. They had also suffered enormous losses in their extended family. In our surveys, which we did over a period of time, small numbers, not extrapolatable, back to the Darfur region for reasons of sampling, and for reasons that—which we can go into in terms of what is a representative sample in these refugees. But what we were finding is that the sex ratio, the male-female ratio in these refugee camps showed that there were—for every one woman, you had .6 men. The men were missing. And that you had a very widespread story of rape and plunder. There were primarily older women, younger women, kids, a scrawny donkey that might have survived, and stories that people were able to say, but not with any particular vividness. And this is in part because these are country people who are talking to you through at least two translators, and we can go into the translation difficulty. So it's partly that they speak in concrete ways, and you're talking through translation. And it's part because we were talking to people who, even if they had been there in relative refuge for two or three months from the events that drove them into Chad, they were still stunned and still struggling to come to terms with what their past had been, which is now wiped out, and what their future could possibly be. And this is—this is still the situation. It is now getting worse, both in Darfur and in the refugee setting. And the conclusion that we are coming to is that the society that Alex saw in '84, '85, the society that Omar comes from, the society that some of us have begun to understand and read about as we begin to care about this part of the world, that society is gone. It has been destroyed in these last three years of war. And whatever lies ahead is an unknown, but most of us feel that even with the ceasefire, and even with a very extensive process of accountability and reparations and justice for various dimensions, we have lost an incredibly important, integrated, subtle, and interrelated set of societies in Darfur. And it is through our inaction, our incapacity to get coherence from the international community. And it is going to be on the records as one of the great failures of the international community at the start of our 21st century.
Jennifer, thank you for that briefing. There's so much to pass on in terms of the contours of this crisis. Gloria has been really at the forefront of activism and advocacy, and also brings knowledge and focus from southern Sudan as well. So Gloria, give us a few words of what's on your mind.
Sure. And again, I certainly want to echo my colleagues in expressing appreciation for your presence here tonight. As you know, many of us have been involved in Sudan for a few years, and a few years ago, you would go to—first of all, they wouldn't have these four, and if they did, there weren't very many people here. One of the points that I want to make from the outset is, when we tell the full story of Sudan, it becomes discouraging for people. And so, for me, one of the challenges, as a woman of faith—I get paid to have faith— is to be grounded in the reality of Sudan, but not be mired or paralyzed by the reality of Sudan. And so one of the reasons that I'm excited to be among a group of students is because, historically, students have been bifocal, in the sense that you've been able to see what the reality of the present is, but to force the rest of the world to look to another future and a brighter future. And so we are very much relying on you as students to push us past this reality, to get to another place. And again, I'm very appreciative of your presence here. About two years ago, I sat in a group of about 20 women who represented every region of Sudan, and the question came up is to accountability and how to really respond to this government in the wake of all that has happened in Sudan. There was some tension around that, which shifted when one woman said that "I myself have not been violated, but I act on this truth, that if my sister has been raped, then I have been raped." And so I've come to this issue in that context, that as a woman, my sisters have been raped, and therefore, I operate as though I too was raped, and am committed to speaking out on their behalf. I first became involved in Sudan in July 2001, when I made my first trip there. As you've heard, the war in southern Sudan, that civil war that pitted the government of Sudan, which is based in Khartoum, against the southerners, had gone on now for some 20 years, and one of the byproducts of that was slavery. You know this scenario. You've read it over and over again, the Arab militia into the villages, killing the men, raping women. And in southern Sudan, sometimes, mostly women and children are taken into the north, where they are sold into slavery, chattel slavery, with experiences very much akin to the experiences of my ancestors some 400 years ago. When that news broke in America, there was a good bit of consternation, as you can imagine. A group that's based here in Boston, the American Anti-Slavery Group, working with another group based in Zurich, Christian Solidarity International, pretty much at the behest of local villagers in southern Sudan, supported a very elaborate underground railroad, controversial underground railroad, which saw the return of people who had been enslaved in the north back into their villages in the south. Met with a number of these individuals, especially the women, heard their stories. And then subsequently, with six other women, formed a group called My Sisters Keeper that has now focused on providing girls' education in one village in southern Sudan. And we now have almost 1,000 girls in school and in a primary school. We have raised over $100,000, and are now looking to actually construct the campus now that there is peace in southern Sudan, and are very excited about that. When we went to dedicate the school about two years ago, the girls greeted us with the song that roughly translates into "It is now our turn to be in charge, it's our time to rule." And so we are helping the girls live out their girl power, and that's very exciting for us. Because of my commitment to the people of southern Sudan, and really at their prompting, I then traveled into Darfur in February of 2005, visited in two camps in Ni'ala, and met with some 60 women in small groups over about five days. Over that period of time, I heard stories of unconscionable abuse, something like—not something—24 of the 60 women, 40% reported being raped, gang raped. Again, you know those stories. But I see this very much as a woman's issue, and as a part of a culture of violence against women that is operating worldwide with impunity. So I encourage women and people who care about women to speak out on the situation in Darfur, and to see that as an opportunity to confront the perpetrators of violence against women worldwide. And again, my work is to keep all of us encouraged, and I, despite all that we've heard, firmly believe that if we are creative enough and resourceful enough and work hard enough, that history will reflect that a grassroots movement was mobilized, and we did, in fact, stop a genocide. So I thank you for partnering with us in this effort.
Before we throw it out for questions, and I hope you all are formulating them, I just want to get a couple of clarifications on sort of where the situation is now. As we've heard, that we have the International Criminal Court, even in spite of perhaps the US not cooperating as we'd like, they did allow it to be referred to the International Criminal Court. They have not been able to go to Darfur to investigate. That's one piece, accountability. There's a massive humanitarian effort underway. Jennifer talked about the current conditions, but there are many, many parts of Darfur that are no-go areas for the humanitarian operation, because it's simply too dangerous, too violent, the fighting is too intense, and roads are blocked and so forth. And that's sometimes in both directions, of roadblocks and car hijackings and attacks on humanitarian workers, as well as a lot of these attacks coming from the government of Sudan cooperating with the local Janjaweed militias. So we have—but by and large, we've heard that, you know, people are not yet, at this point, starving to death. But that could happen if there is a massive pullout of humanitarian workers. And then, most importantly, we're talking, as Alex said, stop the killing. So what I want to ask any or all of you is, you know, we know that the United Nations Security Council passed a resolution calling for the current force of African Union, 7,000 African Union troops to be—who are supposed to be keeping what is not really a peace. And mostly, they can just monitor, and they can't really stop violence to become a UN force. But that had to have the consent of the Sudanese government. President of Sudan is vehemently opposed such a force, and as we've heard in recent days, most experts, observers, and participants in all of this believe that there is never going to be a UN force, that that's pretty much gone now. So the question is, what is, in the next weeks or months, the way in which you see the violence stopping? And what should we be doing to get the world closer to that place? We'll let Alex start. Omar, you can disagree.
Yes, as Susannah has said, not only has President Bashir rejected the handover to a UN force, he's also rejected the compromise that was put forward, which was a hybrid African Union-UN force. And what this actually presents us with over the next month is a very serious problem, because the African Union force has just had its mandate extended for another six months, but it has no money. Its money runs out on the 1st of January. Now, the situation of the AU force is—it suffers from a number of problems. At the moment, there is no political leadership. There is—the person who was nominated as the AU Special Representative for Sudan was vetoed by Khartoum, so there is actually no political leadership of the AU in Khartoum. That may change. Hopefully, they will appoint someone soon. In fact, most likely, they will appoint a joint representative of the UN and the African Union, which would, I think, be a step forward. But at no time has this AU force been able to develop a plan of operations. And I think more fundamental— And I think more fundamental than the numbers of troops, or the mandate, or the amount of armor, is actually having a plan. Because this problem is going to take a long time to be solved. It cannot be solved overnight. Even if, you know, 40,000 NATO troops were to arrive in Darfur tomorrow, they would not be able to stop this, not for many months, even if they had the goodwill of the Sudan government. There needs to be an approach that actually gets the communities of Darfur onside. The Darfurian communities themselves are the greatest asset in this, and many of them are armed. They have their local village militia. And these should be, as it were, the force multiplier. They should be the eyes and ears of any international force. And it's only when a force is there and the commander knows that he and his troops are going to be there for four, or five, or six years, and he actually is staffed up not just with military personnel, but with political officers, community liaison officers, that he will actually be able to do his job. Effective peacekeeping in these circumstances is nine parts political work and community liaison to one part force. Now, the situation we have at the moment is that the AU force—it runs from month to month. There was a time over the last summer when, for two months, the troops were not paid. At no time have they known, since the troops first arrived, at no time have they known how long they're going to be there, more than a few months in advance. And at the moment, they don't know if their salaries are going to be paid in January.
Is that roadblock the international community? The money is not flowing through, or it's not being given? I know that, you know, there was a U.S. legislation to give $50 million this past year to the AU. Is that just a teeny bit? Is it not getting through? Are others not helping?
That was actually blocked. It was actually authorized. And then—I don't know the politics of Congress, but it was actually blocked.
Hasn't gone through yet.
It didn't go through. And ironically, the AU is actually cheaper to run than the UN. And I think the very first step is actually to say, yes, we—you know, we'd much rather have a UN force. We all know that it would be better, but let's at least make what we have work. And the underfunding of the AU force and the lack of any long-term commitment is frankly shocking.
Noamir, do you have a response?
I believe, you know, yesterday—just yesterday officially, President Bashir rejected the hybrid intervention after—
Hybrid meaning African Union plus UN.
Plus the UN. And this is a compromise that was reached in Addis Ababa after he vehemently, you know, blocked the 1706 from being implemented. And true to the fashion of the government of Sudan, agreeing on something and then reneging on it. And this has been going on and on and on, not just, you know, negotiations like this and this, but peace agreements signed under that line, and they came back and they reneged on them. Besides the fact that they use every obstacle to delay whatever that part that they wanted to do, like, you know, the visas for international workers and the permits to travel and the permits to work, and also creating conditions that is making it difficult for people to go. Most of these IDPs are in places where the international assistance cannot reach them because the government of Sudan is creating these conditions of lack of security for the international agencies to go and be able to do that. So, in the peacekeeping, I would say, short of a regime change, nothing is going to help. But that is a word that is politically incorrect, and nobody wants to touch that. And this is an option—
Until the elections in 2009?
Well, until—it's an option that only the Sudanese people will exercise. And they will, definitely. So, what can we do in the international community? I think the obligation of accountability and the right to protect, which is voluntary, and then it becomes the responsibility to protect. And then, we look at the tools to exercise that protection. The African Union is underfunded, and it doesn't have the experience. It doesn't have—to political officers, 7,200 troops in a real estate area the size of France, and they don't have the mandate because they are not there to provide protection to begin with. Actually, it's widely believed that the African Union troops that are in Darfur are protecting. People know, wrong. They are there. Their mandate is to provide security for civilian observers that are writing about ceasefire violations. Ceasefire that doesn't exist was signed in April of 2004. Nobody suspected it. It was signed April 8th, and April 8th itself, there was violation of it. So, you know, what are we going to do? The people of Darfur are going to die. So, the option that Alex is talking about, that, you know, we have militias in several places that are going to provide security. We have to solidify that. We have to help the people of Darfur to resist their own government. We have to be able to work with the other people of Sudan that are completely being alienated of this. Because for the longest time, the government of Sudan had a blackout in the papers and the news media that it controls people inside Khartoum. When we meet them outside, they come out and say, oh, what is happening in Darfur? You come from Sudan, you tell me. We don't know what is going on. So, this is what we need your intervention for. This is what we need you to do, to stand together with the people of Sudan and to help us all find a people-to-people approach to be able to help the people of Darfur.
One of the most exciting things about the movement that's generated is that people in Darfur—or certainly in Khartoum—are learning about what's going on there from all the different websites of all these different organizations. Jennifer, quickly, and then I do want to throw it open. And people who have questions or comments can line up behind the two mics. I think they should be both operating. Jennifer?
I would just like to take this opportunity to frame it, what's going on in Darfur. For those of you who may not see it in sort of the long duration as it relates to the interplay between humanitarian action and international intervention. The period of the '90s showed the positive possibilities for humanitarian work in support of beleaguered populations that were being attacked by oppressive governments or by marauding non-state actors. The period since 9/11 has shown that it is now very difficult to get a consensus at the Security Council for the international community to act with any effectiveness, to intervene in a military way in support of populations that are being attacked. And that is what is blocked here. The Security Council is not going to move on this issue. And the wily and observant and malevolent non-state actors and governments—and I wouldn't say that there are many of both acting in Sudan—these wily observers have recognized that you can hamstring the humanitarian community, which actually, in its way, delivering food, medical care, shelter, and water, can provide a presence of bearing witness and sort of a control rod capacity against marauding forces. What has taken place in Sudan is just block their access and begin to kill some of them. And then, you keep them in the garrison towns in the same way that the population is huddled down, and then you are free to act throughout the countryside. So, we have several checkmates going on here in Darfur at the international level and at the humanitarian level, and it is a terrible position to be in for those of us who have a notion of certain options, and we see they can't be carried out politically. So, I think the virtue in this very constrained situation lies in what a number of people on the panel have been saying, which is, how can you galvanize grassroots action in this country? Grassroots action is necessary in Europe, and this is something we need you to help us galvanize. And grassroots action in Sudan. That is what needs to happen because the major forces that were active in the '90s—the humanitarian community and the United Nations, or NATO and regional powers and regional forces like the AU—are not active, not viable, and not among the list of real options.
I just want to add quickly to that grassroots efforts in Africa because, you know, we've talked about the whole notion of African solution, African problem, African solution. But it will be tremendous when community grassroots in Africa then put pressure on the African Union, put pressure on China, which has been a major obstacle here, and China, which is now courting Africa, probably going to be the next colonial rapist on the scene. But at any rate, it'll be important to mobilize grassroots efforts in Africa as well.
Thank you. All right. Everybody who speaks, be brief, please. Identify yourself, and if you want to direct a question to a particular panelist, fine. If you want to anybody, or I may pick if I know who knows the answer.
Good evening. My name is Washeke, and I'm a SPH student. My question is in regards to the tangibles. I agree with your statements, but the reality is, you have a government that is obviously acting with a bit of impunity. So, what are the tangibles? You mentioned grassroots levels, but as students, what can we do to effect this change, to start this change? Because I know a lot of people maybe are feeling, you know, hey, what can I do? But what tangibles make a distinction on the national level here in the States and local level, and what tangibles make a difference in the international community for us?
Let me just throw out one, and we can all contribute to this, but certainly, divestment. And that, again, has been a campaign that was largely driven by students. So, sudandivestment.org is an important way to start.
Other tangibles? Anybody else with a tangible? Do you have— Well, there are many, but go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go for it.
Well, there are different areas. I mean, one tangible is getting our government to continue the pipeline of funding or restart it to the African Union and any other protection that could go on, and also to assure that humanitarian aid. And that's writing your own, Congress people. There are lots of actions out there about that. That's the second kind of tangible. The third, though, is the noise. Because honestly, the Sudanese government is very sensitive at one level to the international publicity around this. They—no government likes to be completely put to shame. And the more that that information gets into Africa and into the neighborhood, the Arab world as well as the African world, the better. And you'd be amazed what kind of stuff goes around on the internet, solid, good information. So, you know, letters to the editor, talking to your media, emailing around, creating large email networks, you know, that can actually help as well. I don't know if people have others. There are many actions and many groups. It's really quite extraordinary, the flourishing of groups with different focuses, the kind of work that Gloria is doing that's very tangible, which is actually helping people develop civil society all over the country, is quite important.
And again, I want to underscore the importance of your reaching internationally. As you know, the credibility of the United States when it comes to talking about human rights is like, excuse me. So, so far, this is pretty much seen as an American-driven grassroots movement. So, we really need to work hard to make this international. And that's, again, something that students in particular have the facility to do.
Next.
I'm Shorter. Hi, I'm Sabina Carlson. I'm trying to make this as quick as possible. I have been watching and listening about Darfur since it started, and I've been fortunate enough to hear all of you speak at a number of different occasions, Mr. Dole and Mr. Asmal, just this Sunday. And I've been listening for a very, very long time to all these different things, to so many different solutions and hopes and fears. And I've realized that from three years ago, when there was such silence on this, there's—when I think of how—the difference has changed. There's so much more being said. There's so many more of these panels. There's so many more people speaking out. But if I take a step back and I still look at the world, I'm still astounded and terrified by the silence. And Reverend Hammond, you said it right, you know, this needs to be an international movement, needs to be a global movement. It can't just be us anymore. It can't just be anyone anymore. And my question is, I know, as coming from a family of people who were—most, a lot of my family did not make it through the Holocaust, and we died in silence. And the world—I just can't anymore. I can't take the silence, and I want to know, how is it that we inspire these voices throughout the world? Because it needs to be the whole world saying no, even if we're saying it in 100 different languages and 100 different things we're asking for, the world still needs to say no. So, how do we inspire that to happen? How do we make that happen? And what is going to make this whole world finally just stop, finally, in the quiet that's going to kill us?
Thank you.
Well, I think we need a pastor to answer that on one level. So, I will—well, I will very quickly pass the mic to Gloria. But I would say that we—it requires a combination of passion and terror and impatience, which I hear in you. And that needs to be sustained because this is a long problem. This is a long set of issues to deal with. The world is a very different place from what it was 10 years ago, and the United States is a diminished giant. And we are handicapped, coming from the United States, to try to do anything on the international stage. That means that all of this talk about globalization requires students to get globalized. And this is going to be out of the economic reach of a number of you, but it's not out of email reach. You have got to become connected with Europe first, Africa if you can. And there are a number of ways of connecting with other groups around the world, and that is something that was not available to the student movement when I was active in Vietnam. We had no international reach. And so—and it took a very long time. I mean, that was a 15-year war, really, when you look at it from the standpoint of the Vietnamese. And they have survived and come through it. One of the things to say about this is that the people of Darfur are very tough. It is true that half of them now are either refugees or IDPs, and the other half, we actually don't know very much about. Some of them are probably okay, most of them are not. So, this is an entire region, 6 to 7 million people, that are being held in this grip. It is not, however, the massive industrial grip that the Nazis held Europe in. There are still spaces. There is still militia. There are still rebel groups. There are still places to hide. I don't mean to say that everyone is not hunted in Darfur, but they're hunted at different times and different places, and some of them have made it out. So, this is—a thing that is going to challenge all of you as young people because you're impatient, and you've got to stay impatient. But you've got to be in this for the long run because it is not going to be over this time next year.
Reverend?
I would just say quickly that, yes, the engagement of Europe is important. We try to engage Africa, 53 countries that are the African Union members. Not a single country, until I came here an hour ago, not a single country condemned what happened in Darfur and let the government of Sudan hear, you know. And we are talking about the African Union that is going to help us in stopping this. Not a single—to admit that what has happened is wrong and to take the perpetrator to task and to tell them that this is wrong, stop it. Not happened. 23 countries that are members of the Arab League, not only not condemning what happened in Darfur, but they are actually in the corner of the government of Sudan, supporting it for what it's doing. And a country like Qatar, which is heading the Security Council for this month, is playing a surrogate mother for the government of Sudan, adopting its positions, and had the Arab League behind it. So, we have to shame the Arab League for doing that. About 70 countries—I'm not sure how many countries are members of the Islamic Conference. None of them. Maybe, you know, individuals say, a leader from Turkey or a Basanjo from Nigeria, for example, being an African and from largely Muslim country, talking about this individual. But the position of a country, saying that I represent this government of this X-Y country, I refuse what is happening in Darfur, is not happening. The Europeans did it. So, we are in Boston University, and let's talk to the seniors in Oxford University, in the University of Belgrade, in the University of Obsala. Let's say, we are coming to march with you this summer. We want to have a website where your Student Union and our Student Union, or whatever organizations that you have, we are going to do this virtual exhibition of pictures for the people of Darfur to see that we are unified together against this, and we think that the responsibility of all the students is to be the consciousness of the nation. the nation. And we did this in Boston. Please, come with us and let us do this. This is one way of doing it.
Great. I want to make sure we get to some of the other questions, and I know Gloria wanted to talk, but well, let's get another couple of questions and keep what you're going to say. And I'm going to just give, take the privilege to ask my colleague Karen to tell us in a few minutes about the global action that's going to happen next week, because that might be encouraging as well in answer to your question. Please.
Hi, my name is Shanika. I'm a undergrad at BU. And my question's kind of two-pronged. I was wondering, what exactly is the goal or the objective of the Janjaweed? And how can the international community maybe satisfy that, almost as a ransom for the life of the Darfur people?
Yes, Omer.
I think, I've never seen, I've never heard the Janjaweed articulate any goal. They are, to me, they are as victims, as the same people that they are killing, because they are used by the government of Sudan to watch this war by proxy. The Arabs of Darfur are not the culprits. Let us, first of all, try to redefine the Janjaweed. In my mind, the Janjaweed are not the marauding bandits that are, you know, having AK-47s and running around with their Toyota pickup trucks or horses. The Janjaweed are those in Khartoum, who conceived, aided and abated and financed and gave the marching orders to the Janjaweed of Darfur to do the killing at their behest. So, that is, most of, in most of my public speeches, I say, one of the demands of the people of Darfur is not to disarm the Janjaweed like people like to talk in peace agreements or conferences. We want to dismantle the institution of the Janjaweed. It's a concept, it's a frame of mind. In Khartoum, used by the government that is having an agenda of forced Islamization and Arabization, and it is not the only one in the region. Let us not forget that the Islamic Brigade and the Arab Alliance, it started in Libya and in other places, and financed by Gaddafi, and he's still meddling in the business of Chad and Darfur. And every time that we see, there is something that we are going to do in terms of bringing the movements together, for example, to articulate a certain position in Darfur, he will invite them in Tripoli and through some bribes, he will say, oh, this person is going to do this, or this person is going to do that. And also, he invited several times, Debbie, for example, the president of Chad, and Omar Bashir, to sit together. And they leave Tripoli, and the situation goes back again. So the spoilers and the villains of peace are there in the region. But the Janjaweed are also the victims, because the government of Sudan tomorrow, when all is said and done, and we came to who perpetrated these heinous crimes, then we say, oh, the Arabs, the Janjaweed of Darfur, who killed their brother in there, and take them to the ICC or somewhere else. So we have to find out what the government of Sudan wants to begin with, from Darfur, and why they are using the Janjaweed, and we pretty much have an idea.
Next.
Yes, my name's James Herms, and I'm an MIT alum. I have a column in The Tech, and the last issue, actually, came out today, mentions the talk by Eric Reeves, Long Days Die, and, which I attended. And he acknowledges, even though he supports divestment, that it's not going to work, that a year from now, the situation will be much the same, and, which I appreciate his counter. But there was another proposal, which students were to vote on, which is targeted investment. Seemed like that would provide jobs for the people when they come back, because as Professor Leaning pointed out, there's not much land left, and they're wound up in the cities, in the slums. And I believe half of the oil money would go to southern Sudan, which needs it. So what do people feel about that as an alternative? And I also wondered if anybody has surveyed the people in the camps, you know, or in Chad, to find out what they feel. You know, why have the students vote when you could have the people who would be affected vote?
Does anybody want to take a stab at that?
One of the things, I don't know if this is what you were getting at, but one of the things that Physicians for Human Rights has been working on is the compensation aspect of the eventual peace agreement. And this may be getting at what, some of what you're talking about, which is that, at the end of the day, there will be some negotiation. This is also a response to the question about the Janjaweed. There are certainly, at the local level, economic motives for everybody. People want to get their land back, they want to get their possessions back. And one of the reasons that many of, that some of the rebel groups did not sign the agreement, one of the many, several reasons, is that they wanted compensation for their enormous economic losses. And at the same time, what might get some of the marauders to lay down their arms is if they feel they have some place to feed their camels and goats and donkeys. So, I mean, there is going to be some kind of this Darfur-Darfur dialogue that's part of the eventual peace process, where some of this should be settled. I don't know, Alex is really the expert on this.
Yes. If I could pick up also on the previous question. The reality is that sooner or later, there has to be a peace agreement, there has to be a political settlement, and that the government has not been defeated on the battlefield. And the most difficult and painful thing, for those of us who are involved in mediation, trying to get a peace agreement, was the simple reality, which is that we would like this government to say, okay, you know, we will surrender power, but the only way of getting a peace agreement is a compromise with a government that we all believe is very disreputable and has done some extremely horrific acts in the past and is continuing to do that. Now, the irony of this is that actually, the political differences between the rebels and the government were very, very minor. The issues that actually stopped them all signing the same piece of paper, compared to all the issues on the table, were incredibly small. It came down to three issues, just three. Number one was, the rebels wanted, which was not in the peace agreement, or they wanted a clarification that their own forces would be involved in monitoring the disarmament of the Janjaweed and the return of displaced people home. And the government actually agreed to that. After the peace agreement was finalized, the following week, I was actually in, involved in this particular exchange, the government actually conceded that, leaving us with two issues. One was compensation. The government had put $30 million down as a down payment. The rebels said, okay, the compensation commission that you have designed in the peace agreement may award more, but we don't think the government will really pay up. We want a bigger down payment. And they said $100 million. Now, the government had already agreed to $700 million as payments for development in the region over the coming three years, in addition to what the international community will provide. So this is a very small amount compared to what was being provided. And then the last thing was, they wanted equal representation in the legislatures of the three Darfur states. And the draft peace agreement had given the government parties a small majority. So in fact, it came down to these very, very small issues. And those issues can be bridged, and there is an attempt to bridge them at the moment. But the fundamental problem is actually not that. The problem is that two sides simply don't trust each other. And there needs to be some really credible guarantee underpinning this, so that, we have to look at it from both sides. The rebels fear they will be swindled again. The government fears that if international troops come in, they will have a mandate. In Arabic, they call them international forces, Kuatt Da'riyet, the same term that is used for the coalition troops in Iraq. So they fear, Bashir feels that he's going to surrender, you know, his country to an invading force. Now, of course, this isn't what's going to happen. But somehow, that confidence needs to be built. And painful though it is to actually go through this process, it means getting an agreement from Bashir.
Quick word, and then on to the next question. The quick word is that this, the Sudanese government has signed many documents and then not lived up to them. The rebels are precipitous. You get them in a room, and then they're in every corner. And they lack sophistication, integrity, and credibility, at least the ones, many of them, that were in Abuja. So it, you're dealing with interlocutors that are not reliable on both sides. And there's a distance between the people who really want something to happen in Darfur and some of the people that are actually being dealt with in the diplomatic circles. So that's the history. And a fundamental problem with trying to make peace between two sides when they are not exhausted, when they have not said the only option is stopping this war, is that it is, it requires very good leaders to make a peace when there is still an option for war. And in this situation, there is no trust, as Alex has said, there's not a lot of, you know, there's no trust, let's put it that way. And so, from my perspective, looking at how wars end, they either end because everybody is drained of blood, or they end because there are good leaders on both sides that can come to an agreement, or they end because there is an internationally imposed ceasefire, but minimal, 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 not an elaborate set of what's going to happen with reparation, who's going home, who's going to have a position in government. It's just simple, stand down, ceasefire, stop where you are. And we're going to introduce a peacekeeping force, just peacekeeping, just on this line of the ceasefire, and then we'll kick it forward into history to figure out what the hell to do after that. And that, to me, is what needs to be happening now, a really minimalist ceasefire, with all the other stuff that follows to be argued about. And that is something that I think could be the message that is part of this international movement, which is the young people saying to the grownups, grow up, stop fighting, and stop here.
Let's get on to the next, I know we're getting close to the end, so I want to make sure we go quickly now and make sure you get your questions asked.
My name is Khalid Kody. I'm an artist from Sudan. The nature of the Sudanese government is the key point in understanding what's going on there, which is very important to identify as a fascist government, which is one to control or to create human beings with certain ingredients. So, it controlled the media, TV, radio, economic, newspaper, and so forth. It practiced dictatorship against all intellectual, south, north, east, west. People have been tortured, run in prisons, and so forth. Saying that is, what the missing, the other missing point is, the international belief in people of Sudan. This is very important piece there. To empower the people in Sudan is essential for how we can make a change on that. To support the civil society also is essential in how you can make a change of that, because people of Sudan is not how people represent them, probably see them over the media. Like, you know, they have culture, and intellectual, and journalists, and they have doctors and teachers, and thinking, and so forth. So people in Khartoum, they are not all the bad guys. There is very, very good guys who are in Khartoum.
Thank you for making that point.
And they are regular people, and we have to empower those people.
Yes, that's very important. Thank you.
And I really want to underscore the point that Khalid makes, that, for me, at this point, my real focus is on doing whatever I can to facilitate, augment, come alongside the Sudanese community. My theme is that any successful movement to change the status of a marginalized people is led by those people. So ultimately, this is, the solution has to come from the people of Sudan. And I'm now actually focused on a wonderful initiative that involves Sudanese women to bring women from all over the region together in a conference to begin to talk about peace, because the reality is that really 95% of the people of Sudan have been marginalized by about 5% that's represented by this government. So that is, for me, the most critical step at this point.
Very, very important. Thank you.
I'm going to try to be brief. It appears to me that, first, that the political geography of Africa was not drawn by the African people themselves. And so a lot of these conflicts probably arise out of the fact that these are very artificially created entities. With the fall of the, with the fall of communism, new political lines were drawn in Eastern Europe, with many new countries coming into being, is it possible that some of the political entities that truly exist, that, you know, for example, the south, north, south axis in Sudan looks very similar to the north-south axis in Nigeria, for example, with the same, you know, political results? Resource-rich south being, it seems to me like a neo-colonial relationship between a resource-rich south and a sort of a political elite in the north. So is it possible that the people themselves could create some sort of partition, you know, that allows these two groups to live side by side? And is it the resources that are preventing that from taking place?
Very short answer, because I want to get to the last two, and then I want to wrap up.
It is true that the borders were not drawn by us, and these countries were not, that is why I see the untruthfulness, in the words of Bashir, who is saying, this is a recolonization of Sudan. You know, these powers who drew the country and who gave you your independence want to recolonize you, why they left in the first place? It would be stupid to go, you know, and come back. But the whole thing is, yes, it has its roots in that, and it has its roots also in our inability, since we gained independence January 1st of 1956, to create a nation-state in Sudan. And maybe that is, that is one of the, you know, the things that Professor Fookayama alluded to in his, you know, American Interest, recent article, I think it's November 23rd, if you go to the internet, you will see it. And talking about, maybe Darfur is the test for looking at Africa and redrawing the map. And he's alluding to the fact that only recently, after we came back from the Middle Ages, Europe was 300 different entities, all claimed to be independent, and now Europe is 30 countries. And they have more bloody wars, and more abuses, and more genocides than we are experiencing now in Darfur. So probably, what we need to do is to let the forces of nature work. And he's, ironically, at the end of his article, he's saying, perhaps Darfur is better off being part of Chad, like Chad has no problems. And better off, you know, being part of Sudan. And also, that explains why we said this over and over again, and on the record, you know, in my testimony before the International, the Committee on International Relations of the US Congress, May of 2004, I said, if the issue of Darfur was left to its own devices, it's going to destabilize the whole Sahel region. And I'm not proud that I'm correct, or I've been correct. But, you know, we see that is happening today, and maybe this is the labor that is going to give birth to a new Africa. However, before we go into that intellectual exercise, I think the reality is, people are dying today, and we have to stop that, and we have to work on that diligently. We have to, like Jennifer said, and Alex before that, and everybody, we have to stop it right now, and then we see what can be done in the near future.
Thank you, Omer.
Thank you. I actually just want to follow up on what you just ended with. It's an activism question and an action question, and it echoes something I heard just a few seconds ago. It sounded like, I could be wrong, it sounded like what you were saying was that maybe the only thing that will give the space for anything to stop is an international body. And you were talking just a little while ago about how sides weren't actually very far apart. Well, I feel like that happens a lot around the world, where sides are not very far apart, and then it devolves into an amazing genocide or terrible atrocities once again, and again, and again. So my question is, I don't know if I agree with what I heard earlier, which is that for these students and other students, the place to look is to Europe, and to do things through that, because I don't think it's unreal, I don't think it's realistic, and I also don't think that these students are going to be doing that, or any students. I feel like we've kind of written off our own government, in a sense that we can't get them to do anything, or we haven't been able to, so therefore, we're going to look to other governments when we know that when our government puts their minds to it, they can do quite a bit around the globe, for good or for bad. So my question is, have we been too nice? Have all of our movements of activism basically said, let's be nice, let's have rallies, let's do this, when in the face of what you just said a second ago, it's happening now, we need to stop it, have we not learned from other more creative activism movements that have to do not with violence, but annoyance, obstruction, and really getting our official, I mean, we are only a bus ride from Washington. And I just don't feel that there are people motivating students to go down to Washington to be annoying, to be obstructionist, to sit outside of offices of representatives. And with maybe the new tide in government, maybe there are more options for these students to take advantage of than we've given them in the past, or given ourselves in the past. So I just want to hear from you, if you agree with that, if you think we have been too nice, if there is another approach to activism that actually may get to some of the the solutions that you’re talking about through our own government.
Well, you heard me correctly when I said that there would need to be an international pressure to get a ceasefire going. That is what comes through international governments. That would have to be from the Security Council. So how does the Security Council say there has to be a ceasefire, and this is what we’re going to do about it? You have to get the P5 to agree, not have China, not have Russia veto that. To get China and Russia not to do their threatened veto requires European pressure. We need the British and the French to be much more proactive, and much more engaged on this, and much more willing to say that they also, as a government, as members of Europe, find what is going on in Darfur absolutely untenable. They have not done that. So the United States can certainly push harder and sweeten the deal for China, France, and Britain, and Russia to come on board on an effective Security Council resolution. And so to the extent that we can get the United States to be more effective in that regard, I completely agree. There is still room for a great deal of pressure. But it is not, it is not the only player on this one.
And the US can cash in a lot of political chits, though, and diplomatic ones, that it has not, even with China.
Indeed.
And so I agree, actually, with you, just stepping in for a second outside my moderator role, that it’s really important to be very hard on the United States. Those of you who have heard John Prendergast interviewed, he is beating up on them regularly. He’s one of the leaders in this movement, and there are plenty of opportunities to do that, because, and we hear from congresspeople who are, you know, out there on the hustings, like Congressman Capuano, regularly, that they want the noise coming from here to there. There have been sit-ins, there have been die-ins, there have been, it’s relative to Rwanda, this is quite extraordinary. It definitely could ramp up a lot more.
Very quickly, I think the problem, actually, on the ceasefire issue, is that the US has been trying to pursue several different objectives at the same time. It’s been trying to put UN troops in Darfur, it’s been trying to enforce the peace agreement that was only partially signed in May, which cannot be implemented unless it is signed by everybody, and is trying to do other things as well. A ceasefire was never the priority of the US government with regard to Darfur, never. There was a time, indeed during the negotiations, when we, the mediators, we said, “We think we can get a ceasefire, we don’t think we can get a full deal.” The US government said, “No, that’s not good enough. You have to go for the whole deal.” We said, “The wheels will come off.” They said, “We’ll make it happen.” China is in favor of a ceasefire. And then, when they had a meeting in Addis Ababa a few weeks ago, the Chinese took a lead in saying, “We must have a ceasefire.” I think if the international community is to call for one thing, which is to stop the killing, then you will get international consensus. It’s because the US has been moving around the place. It’s been divided as to what it wants to do.
Interesting point.
I just had two quick questions.
You have the last word, from the floor. Reverend Gloria is going to have the last word from up here.
Right now, what we have as a security force in Sudan, how exactly are we going to make it stronger? Like, how do you expect it? With 7,000 troops, is what you said earlier, how can we make that a stronger security force to prevent thousands of deaths? I’m kind of confused with that, as it is right now. Just had it.
I think the 7,000 troops of the African need to be beefed up, and the Security Council Resolution 1706 asks for the number to jump to 22,500 men, and women is strong. But we’ve seen, looking at the international scene today, that this is becoming unattainable. And so, there was, we alluded 1706 to a kind of negotiation led by the Secretary General in Ethiopia, and the Chinese, like Alex rightly said, played a pivotal role in that. However, you know, the Americans stood behind and did not participate in that, so it was a no-go. And Bashir, yesterday, got the audacity to say, after he agreed, he says, “No,” even to that. So we were left in limbo. We want to beef up the troops, and we’re already in Abuja on the 24th of last month. We agreed, and we said, “We are going to extend the life of AU for another six months, until June of next year.” So with the same handicap that they have, lack of funding, and lack of good mandate, and lack of will of the nations to do this, and we are not sure even whether there are going to be a force that is going to be engaged, or there are going to still to be monitors of a ceasefire that doesn’t exist, and we don’t want, well, I’m being a little bit depressive here, but this is the reality of it. So are we going to look for a ceasefire? Like Alex is saying, I think it is important, I think we should push for that. And the reason that we are trying to bring the Europeans is that they can come up with, you know, push this initiative further. And they say Sudan is got to comply, and they have to have ceasefire, because Bashir, until yesterday, is talking about, “We are capable of,” that is his government, “is capable of finishing the work in Darfur militarily.” And they are working on that. And they unleash the Genji weed now to attack the Gharisi towns. So if we don’t do something now, it might be too late for us, because by the time we have ceasefire, there will be no fire, because the fire will burn everything, and we have ashes in Darfur.
Can I ask a quick question as well? Sorry. Okay. What more can the neighboring African countries do to negotiate with the Sudanese leaders as it is?
There’s a lot of neighbors.
Can they do more, though? Like, I mean, African countries?
Very quick.
The African Union is the neighboring African countries, and a number of them are actually very closely involved in this. Some of them are being dragged into the war themselves, Chad and Central African Republic. And, you know, we should not allow our attention on Darfur to detract from the fact that we may see an identical or comparable tragedy unfold in China.
I just want to give the floor, one quick second, to my colleague Karen, to give you some words of hope about at least global activism for next week.
Again, thank you all for coming, and I know you’ve been patient, and right afterwards, the two student coordinators are going to close up the conference. But I just wanted to briefly let you know that I have been privileged enough to be sort of at the birth of the internationalization of the movement, and I don’t know how many of you here went to the September 17 event in New York, but it was also, it also coincided with a number of events worldwide. That is going to be repeated next Sunday, December 10th is International Human Rights Day, and is going to be a worldwide day of events to stop rape in Darfur. If you go to globaldayfordarforg, there are a list of all the events in dozens of African countries, European countries, North America, and as well as in our very own hometown. At 5:00 in Copley Square, there will be a candlelight vigil for Darfur. Our own Reverend Dr. Gloria Whiteham will be speaking, as well as Liz Walker, and that should be a great event and a way for everyone to get involved. So again, I urge you to go for Global Day for Darfur. And also, the Mass Coalition for Darfur is, or actually, the Save Darfur Coalition, is having a weekend of prayer. So if your clergy would like to get involved, they can go to savedarforg.org and download some sample sermons. So thank you all for coming, and we’re going to turn it over to Susannah.
All right. Well, we are going to have Gloria have a word of inspiration for us, and then we are turning it to our wonderful hosts and organizers, who I’m going to thank in one second.
Well, I, maybe I locate it in a few things, and then I’m going to close with the text. First of all, it’s important to remember that historically, the response to genocide has been inaction, and the policy has been, “See no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil, and therefore do no good.” Today is an historical moment, because this is the first time that there have been grassroots that has mobilized to actually stop a genocide. So in that sense, we are looking to change a paradigm that has been in place for hundreds of years. So we need to honor the fact that we, again, are making history. And it is also true that thus far, despite the sense that there has not been a lot accomplished, the grassroots has already done a tremendous amount, at least in terms of getting the world to respond with humanitarian support. I promise you, having been involved in southern Sudan for over 20 years, that would not have happened if you had not made noise. And we can’t even begin to imagine how many lives have been saved because people like you put your hand on your hips, bobbed your head, pointed your finger at George, and said, “No more.” So that’s something that we need to honor. It is also clear to me that one of the reasons that I remain encouraged is because we haven’t exhausted all of the possibilities. We’ve never, as we’ve said, tried to stop a genocide. There’s no book, Handbook for Dummies, on how to stop a genocide. So we are writing this even as we go along. But there are so many more possibilities that we have not explored, and as I’ve said, one of my primary goals at this point is to really support the Sudanese in doing that work. And I found myself the other night when we were listening to another one of these panels, I said, “You know what? I think I’m about tired of listening to experts on Sudan, and now I want to hear from experts from Sudan, and that includes me as well.” So we’ve got, we still have a number of things that we can do. And at the end of the day, what other choices do we have but to continue to fight? And I think of the fact that the reason that I’m here today is, and I suspect most of you are here today, is because you came from ancestors who also faced great difficulties, but refused to shrink back. I had a reporter who once asked me, “Do you ever get overwhelmed?” And it occurred to me, I don’t know how to get overwhelmed. I don’t come from women who got overwhelmed. And so the text says that, “Remember, you faced hard times before, and yet you endured. So do not shrink back, because you don’t come from ancestors who shrunk back and were discouraged, but from ancestors who persevered until they got the reward they were looking for.” So my encouragement to you is to persevere. And you, you’re not going to be able to live with the fact that you threw up your hands and then switched the channel to the Home Shopping Network. You can’t live with yourself like that. So I stay encouraged, I encourage you to be encouraged, and we will, together, stop a genocide.
And thank you, Gloria. We want to honor people who have persevered in organizing this, really extraordinary. Gerard and Andrea and Emily, they came to us some months ago and said, “We’re going to do something big at BU on Darfur,” and we said, “Yeah, right,” and look what they did. It’s really extraordinary, and we want to honor your perseverance and your initiative and view.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you who’ve come out tonight. Please join me in thanking our wonderful speakers for being with us tonight. I’m happy to report that we have an audio/video signal, so we will go to DVD afterwards. I do want to just point out one student who is not up here with us, but Emily. Emily Church is downstairs, and she has been instrumental in helping us organize this event, so please help me thank Emily as well. It’s also her birthday today. So we hope that you leave here today more upset than when you first got here, and we also hope that you’re more informed and also feel empowered to act, to make a difference. I want to leave you with a quote from a US senator. This is something that got me going, and he, this is, I’ll just read the quote, because I can’t say it without looking at it. He said, “If every member of the House and Senate had received 100 letters from people back home saying that we have to do something about Rwanda, then I think our response would have been a little different.” So it’s in our hands to make a difference, and I hope that you feel empowered today to take part in our action fair that’s happening afterwards, to act. And I’ll turn it over to Andrea.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Andrea Provost, and I stand here with my friends Emily and Gerard and the countless others who have helped with their energy to make this difference tonight. And our hope for this night and going forward is to encourage, especially students. I’m incredibly motivated by the young energy that I feel here tonight. During this process, we’ve received so many emails and contacts from people, high school students, undergraduates, graduate students, everyone who, you know, came here tonight and was very excited to participate. And in saying that, I would really love if everyone who is a student here could please take a stand and be acknowledged. As you see, we are many. We are many voices, many hearts, and many minds. And I say, “Let’s put it to action.” We have an amazing action fair outside with lots of ways that you can put your pen to the paper, contact a congressman, be involved. And let’s hold ourselves accountable. Let’s be annoying, as someone suggested earlier. I love doing that, so let’s go and do it. Be an obstacle, do whatever it takes. We’ve heard a lot of creative ideas tonight. And as you’ll see here, you’re welcome to sit for a little while. We have a student and a member of this planning committee tonight who put this DVD together with his brother. There’s amazing photographs and music here. You’re invited to sit. We have refreshments outside as well, as I’m sure you’re all parched by now. So take part in it, be motivated by it, and harvest this energy that you have and you’ve seen here tonight, “Until We Have Justice.” Thank you. Good night.